Concerned citizens who would like to approach the board at this time and make any concerns known, we would welcome you to the podium. Hearing none, we'll move to the approval of the agenda dated December 13, 2016.
Second.
The motion is second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the agenda is approved. Item five is approval of the minutes of the December 6, 2016 meeting.
Move it.
I'll second, is there discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the minutes are duly approved. Item six is discussion and approval of the claims.
We approve the claims.
I'll second, is there discussion on the claims? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the claims are approved. Five to zero. Item number seven is the canvas of the 2016 Hornick Special Election. We have our deputy auditor concerning elections, Steve Hofmeyer. Steve?
Okay, I've got the results here with the abstract of votes and the certificate of election. There was only one gentleman, Derek Fiedler, that filed paperwork to run for the vacancy there at the city council position, and so he is definitely the winner. So I've got the stuff here for you guys to sign.
Very good. I'll move to approve the canvas of the 2016 Hornick Special Election.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion is approved. Pat, I am passing this down to you. We are going to defer on item number eight for the present time, and anticipate that Mr. McKinney, as well as a couple of folks from the city council, may be forthcoming, and Karen is confirming that with her hand motion. Item nine, Human Resources Director, Ed Gilliland. Item A is the approval of the memorandum of personnel transaction.
Move it.
Second.
Motion and a second on the memorandum, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item nine B is approval of the retiree request to remain on the health and dental insurance. I'll move that if I can have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Supervisor Wong, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion is approved, five to zero. Ed, thank you very much. Item 10 is the county auditor's office, and Deputy Auditor Michelle Scaff, and Dennis Butler, our budget and tax analyst, is standing up in her stead, just so you didn't confuse the two. Item 10A is to discuss and approve the 2016 business property tax credits payable 2017, 2018 disallowed by the city assessor.
Yeah, these basically are ministerial tasks you do every year when we get the homesteads and militaries and business tax credits from this county and city assessor. So basically, all you're doing, now you can't look at them individually, there's several thousand upstairs if you'd like to look at them, but basically, it's just a stamp of approval.
Is there discussion or questions concerning this item?
Do them individually?
Yes.
Move on A.
There's a motion on A, item A, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. For your information, I'm passing to my right the canvas from the Hornick Special Election. We are not item B to discuss and approve the 2016 business property tax credits.
Move it.
There's a motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item C, to discuss and approve the 2016 homestead and military applications payable 2017 and 18 by the county assessor.
Move it.
There's a motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. And finally, last but not least, item D, discuss and approve the 2016 homestead and military applications payable 17, 18, approved by the city assessor.
Move it.
I'll second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. That brings us to item number, thank you very much, Dennis. Item number 11 with our Building Services Director, Kenny Schmitz. This is item A, the motion to set the date and time to receive and authorize the opening of the courthouse steam trap project bids for the good of the public. Kenny, can you just tell us in a paragraph or less what the scope of this is towards?
Yes, the scope of this just authorizes a set date, time, and place to open steam trap bids that we receive.
And you are looking to do so next Tuesday at 3:30 PM?
Yes, at the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors Administration Office.
Move it.
And I'll second to open the bids on December 20, 3:30 PM. Is there discussion? So that will, you're anticipating that that will be upstairs where the Board of Supervisors used to meet, or will that be down here?
No, that will be in the administration office where Karen and Heather are.
Okay.
It will take place there.
Okay, so if anyone from the public wants to come at that time to observe, they would be welcome.
They can. Also asking that Pat or his designee be available at that time. Thank you.
So anticipated completion?
Um...
I saw Shane's head pop up back there.
Shane?
We have written in the contract that the steam traps, I'm sorry Shane, Albright the Baker Group, we have written in the contract for the contractor to be done mid-February with the steam traps, getting that all replaced and done. There's one piece I'll linger on just a little bit longer. We've got a condensate tank that's down in the sub-basement, it'll take a little longer to that for the procurement of that, then we'll get that replaced, that'll have no effect on the steam traps. It's just gonna fail in the very near future, so that'll be done as well.
How quickly, because, you know, there's a little bit of unevenness in the temperatures, and that eighth floor today was about all of 80 degrees. How, after doing all of the work on the steam traps, how quickly will it be felt, or is there other things within building automation that have to be worked out and controlling once those steam traps are rectified? Does that question make sense?
It does.
I think it'll be immediately felt in some areas. It won't solve all of our problems because we also have some control problems.
It's the eighth floor right now today, you got to witness, it should've rained in there. So we were looking at the county overall on the new control system so we could see what's going on. The south half of the building was at 99% cooling. The north half of it was at 100% heating, and it was at 80 degrees and opened up wide open and just running like it, so...
When you say cooling, you're talking mechanical cooling, air conditioning?
Yeah, that is exactly correct. Your chiller was running for mechanical cooling, but the other side, the heat valve was wide open and it was going to town trying to get it going. So we were gonna, we're looking into that as a second problem, why is it still running? But that's, that won't be felt as good till we get the controls upgrade piece done.
One item that is positive is that we had a pre-construction or pre-bid meeting, and we had a very good turnout for that, so I'm anticipating, hopefully we get some good bids back.
We filled the, we filled the old boardroom, the people, we had 11, 11 different contractors show up.
Wow.
So, I mean, all the queues upstairs were filled.
Very good. Well, hopefully competition breeds lower prices. So we, any other questions, discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion to set the date and time at December 20, 3:30 PM is approved. We look forward to hearing how the bids come in and the fruition and the report next week.
Thank you.
Item 11B is a motion to approve the Woodbury County standardized indefinite scope contract form, AIAC-132. And do you want to give us a little bit of background on this, Kenny, and work with the county attorney's office?
I will. As we progress with some of our projects in the county, we have several and many contracts that come before the board for approval. A lot of those are the AIAC-132 that you see in today's meeting. Other contracts, there's like a B-132, and there are several other different versions. Every time that we do a project, these contracts have to have language reviews whereby Abigail assists us with making the contract language changes, and then we begin a back-and-forth progress to get the language where it fits both parties. What we're trying to accomplish here, and what I would like to accomplish going forward, is to standardize some of these contracts, and this is, this will be the first of several that I'll bring to you. But Abby has reviewed this, she's incorporated standard Woodbury County language, and so we can hopefully try to shorten our process a little bit, and it'll save at least the first go-around because it'll already incorporates the language that we are looking for. And so what I'm asking today is that we just approve this standard form template.
Great idea. I would move it.
I'll second, is there discussion? Questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item 11C is a motion to approve the LEC kitchen reconfiguration and reallocation of funding for the jail kitchen as required for kitchen and sheriff operations. Kenny?
Thank you. This is the item we had for information last week, we're bringing it back for motion to approve this week. It would be establishing some storage area for the kitchen food service goods in the first floor. That would be in the current conference and training room area on the first floor. We would locate a cooler and a freezer in that area and a dry goods storage area. The placement there is thought to provide better security and better access in delivery and distribution of the food service products to the kitchen. Again, it would necessitate a new conference room, which you saw in your plans last week, that would be located on the west side or the old clerk of courts area.
I would move it.
I'll second, is there discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Thank you for the information last week and this week as well.
You're welcome.
Memorandum of Personnel Transactions is coming down to my left, and we will now move to item 12 with CMBA Architects and Brian Crichton, and this is a motion to approve the LEC expansion telecommunications design services.
Jeremy, if we could step back to 11C?
Sure.
We have a second motion on that, and that would be to reallocate the CIP funds.
Thank you for calling that to our attention. So I would move to reallocate $225,000 of CIP, number C, 1-17, to CIP-B-11, $75,000, and CIP, number B, -12, $175,000.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there discussion? And just for the, because the public doesn't know any of those numbers, this is to take money that was originally allocated to Tuck Pointing at Trosper Hoyt?
That's correct.
And use that here as we are reprioritizing.
That is correct, yes.
If there's a motion and a second, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Now we are to item 12, and just so you know, we are going to have the Ag Expo update following this, if that's all right, and appreciate you very much being here. Item 12 is a motion to approve the LEC expansion telecommunications design services. I'm with Brian Crichton with CMBA Architects and Shane Albright with the Baker Group. And gentlemen, would you please give us an update in what it is that you're requesting of the board this evening?
All right, so when we're in the process of this jail expansion, there's a closet upstairs, and whether we move forward with the jail expansion or we don't, there's a closet upstairs that needs to be dealt with. So this, this is requesting dollars. Up in the area, just outside the jail administration area, is, we ran into a large telecom closet. It does part of the phones and the rest of the courthouse. It's gonna be part of what we need for the new conference room area downstairs, everything. So we, part of this project will locate a home for this new, for this telephone conference. So it'll do all the new telephone for the new conference area that we just approved in the step before. So whether we do the jail or we don't do the jail, this piece needs to happen. So I mean, this is not, as everybody will ask me, is this dependent on the jail? If we don't approve this, there's a couple of negative things that are, that are gonna have, have to happen. We're still gonna have to have some design money, one way or another, to take care of the downstairs and everything else that would be taken care of by those contracts if you don't approve that. The other thing that we've got going on is, we've got a phone board up in this space that nobody really has an idea of where it all goes, what it all does, and whether these phones are still even needed. So part of this contract is to figure out and trace where all those wires go, because it doesn't make sense to move something and rehook things up if they, if they're not even needed anymore. We don't know through the years of remodel and stuff, the age of some of these things, where they even go. We're also working with Abby tomorrow, and then we'll be meeting with a vendor next week. Part of the stuff in this room is the video visitation and a bunch of stuff for the jail that, that we may not want to move if the county is not gonna enter into a long-term contract with Securus, sorry, I couldn't think of the name. You're looking at switching to a different vendor, which is Telospan, so it doesn't make a lot of sense to move, to move the Securus stuff down for not gonna need it.
So you're saying some of that equipment may be proprietary to that particular vendor, relocating it?
Correct.
May not make any sense?
Correct. So we're working with the county attorney as well, is gonna have the people from Telospan come in the following week, just to make sure we're doing the right thing for you. So there could be some fluctuation in that number as far as going not up but down. This is worst-case scenario coming before you. If we don't have to move, if we don't have to move all this stuff, this, this number could, will be less. We just wanted to tell you worst-case scenario so that we could get this process started and figure out what, what everything is.
Thank you very much. Brian, do you wanna?
Besides say ditto, oh, he did a great job. You've got a proposal in your packet that outlines the scope of work, and I do have Kevin Vanderkolk from Alvine Engineering here.
Thanks for being here.
If you have some technical questions about what his firm will be doing, but it outlines specifically what's, what's in that scope of work, so. Shane hit it very well that we're, we're touching areas that are really outside of the tip of our standard scope of work right now, so that's what this will cover, so.
Questions for any of the three individuals who have graced us with their presence tonight and helped us?
Where's Alvine from?
Omaha.
Okay.
Do you mind if I ask you questions, sir?
Kevin Vanderkolk with Alvine Engineering.
Thanks for being here tonight, appreciate it very much. So what does the, the scope of work look like from start to finish, and what would you anticipate a timeline looking like with this?
The biggest challenge is going to be determined, as Shane mentioned, there's a lot of unknowns there. Where does this wiring go? What is it used for? Can some of it be eliminated? So that's gonna be the biggest challenge. How does it migrate to a different location and where does it go? Timeline, we're looking at probably a start-to-finish, two to three weeks.
Okay. Then you'll forgive me for my ignorance because I'm not familiar with that area, but when someone says, "Where does this go and what does this do?", is it the kind of repercussion that if you take this out, all of a sudden some communication somewhere within the law enforcement center might be lost, but you didn't know what it was being used for?
That's why the fieldwork has to be extensive, yes, because there are a lot of operations that go through there, especially on the phone side, and it needs to be known ahead of time where it is, and then come up with a plan, how we're gonna migrate without too much disruption. You're gonna have to have piece by piece when you try and migrate into a different area, and that's the challenge, but you've got the right guy for the job, so.
Okay. Questions?
Not being me, I've got it, I wanted to change my book. Got to get it.
Okay, you, you know someone that can help.
They want to be telling us bragging.
Okay. Okay, great.
I'd move it. Second.
There's a motion and a second.
Where are the funds gonna come from?
The funds will come from CIP-B-8-17, which my understanding is the total package of the law enforcement center expansion, is that correct, or?
That is correct, and the thing I'd mention here, as Shane said, this would have to be done whether we expand or not. So my suggestion would be not to pay down this, set up a separate project, because every dollar you can save in this million-two can go toward possible expansion. We did the same thing with the kitchen, we've done the same thing with remodeling downstairs. We do them whether we had the expansion or not, so I'd separate that away from BA as a suggestion to save a minute, $9,400, but it all is gonna add up, so.
Can I add that to my motion?
Sure, although we don't have a specific...
Dennis, do you, do you have a specific reallocation fund that we could utilize?
I'd say we could take money from the sidewalks over at the, we had extra money there, Dennis, on the sidewalks going to LEC.
No, that one was, that one was big.
The elevator, or the LED lights.
The LED lights, we could, we could definitely have extra money from the LED lights left.
Yes, we have money there.
Can I add that to my motion?
I saw the look in your eye like you wanted to do so. So the motion is to approve $9,400 in funding, reallocation of funds from what was previously allocated for the LED lighting project, and authorize CMBA architects to begin the LEC expansion telecommunications design services.
That's it.
And I'll second that.
And how much is left in that fund, Danny?
We went, we've gone through all these funds, all the projects this year for '16. This will actually be '16 money we're using up, and we still got some of the money, but there are other projects on the line, there are some overages in some projects that we attempt to use up all the '16 money first. I think there's, what, any about, what do you have, about $100,000 left?
I think, I think we're gonna allocate, what we're going to end up with is somewhere in the neighborhood of around $82,000, I think, leftover from the LED project.
And these are funds that have been borrowed already, so we need to spend it within two years, so we're trying to expend those funds first before we go into '17 money.
So they've been taxed for essentially?
We'll be, we are taxing for, let's see, we borrowed the money last year, yes, we are taxing this year for them, correct. We tax the year after we borrow.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Having dispensed with items one through seven and nine through 12, we will now move to item eight, which is an exciting project that the, the city of Sioux City and others in the community have led with, and the county is participating in, that's the Ag Expo Center. And tonight, we are pleased to have Dale McKinney from M+ Architects, as well as Marty Doherty and Renee Billings from the city of Sioux City, and just wanted an opportunity to hear how things are, are going, and have an opportunity to ask any questions or have any discussion that we deem fit, so very much appreciate you being here.
Sorry, later than what I hoped for.
Not here.
But I was next door at a planning and zoning meeting, so I got here as quickly as...
We were gonna start this discussion whenever you showed up, so you're right on time.
Perfect. Thanks for having me. I've been working in and out of meetings with Jeremy, Mark's been there as well, as well as a large group of folks. We started this process a few months back with a, you know, kind of a space programming analysis of getting everyone's wish list, want list together, and at the end of that particular phase, we ended up with a building that was about somewhere in the 260,000 to 280,000 square feet size, which was significant, significantly larger than what any of the previous planning had been done by Nelson Engineering, which I think his building was maybe less than 190. We've kinda trimmed that back to more in the 220,000 square foot category, and we're not done trimming, we're still working on schematic design, but this'll give you a little bit of a flair. On the first sheet is the site plan. This is a very large building, it's 900 feet long, which is three blocks essentially. It occupies almost the entire site, which is, I refer to as kind of banana-shaped, pointed at both ends and a little thicker in the middle along Interstate 29 and a butted up to the Floyd River Channel. So the building showing in, kind of a beige color, parking on both ends that adds up to almost 1,000 cars, 950, 975, somewhere in that category. So that's kind of where we are at the moment. Page two is a floor plan. So stables for 400 stalls plus the support that goes with that, a warm-up area plus indoor storage for equipment, and then the major arena, the writing arena, which is 150 by 300 in size, which is kind of a football field size, more or less. Seating capacity in raised seating of 3,000 seats, plus an upper level that will give us 10 suites, plus what we kinda call a club floor. Back down to the ground floor is all the support areas for this, as well as a blocked-out area of almost, I think, 7,500 square feet for Western Iowa Tech. They wanna bring some of their educational programs into the building, their tech support programs. And the last, the last sheet is an elevation, which just isn't very tall when it's that long on a small sheet of paper. And again, this is kind of a work in progress. We anticipate wrapping up schematic design in detail probably in the next three to four weeks. Come back to the committee, the committee's meeting monthly, bring up, bring them up to speed on where we are with cost estimates at that time, and then hopefully move forward.
So the entrance is on second floor?
The, no, the entrance is on ground floor, but it's on, it's on the, it's on the interstate side now, so the building's been flipped over, and so it's, so there's a covered entry plaza, if you go to the plan to the top of the page. It covered entry plaza, entry on both ends, ticket sales on both ends. Getting into this, utilizing my, my equestrian consultant from Kentucky, as well as, if you've had an opportunity to meet Joe Kelly, that has recently been running a facility similar to this in Reno and Nevada, he's working directly for the not-for-profit committee, so he's kinda part-time in town, but he's officing in my office, so I have access to him whenever he's in town. That's a good, bad thing, 'cause I get more information than I need and not just what I want, but we've, we've been able to evolve the project considerably with his input because he's, he's got 25 years of running these types of facilities, and this, for this to be successful, it needs to be more than just an equestrian center. It really needs to be a multi-use facility so we can book a lot of different things when we don't have horse shows.
Can you talk a little bit about the versatility of the, of this, and what kind of other things that you're anticipating as far as implement shows or otherwise?
Obviously, we've talked about a lot of things, and I think when, when I'm at City Hall and talking to the mayor, we need to be cautious of just not taking everything that works in the Tyson and moving it there, or in the convention center and moving it there, but there are some things that don't work well in either of those locations that have potential to move there. Home show is one example, they've, those folks that get stuck up on that upper level back around the corner, close to the entry point... stuck up on that upper level back around the corner, close to the entry point, don't get the same kind of traffic that everyone else gets, but we're going to market farm shows, we'll have, we'll have door access to bring large equipment into the arena, so could be a winter activity to bring egg equipment into that, there's all kinds of, well, obviously rodeos and bull riding that, they do the bull riding in Tyson, but it doesn't work well there, they don't really do a full rodeo, so we have the ability to do that in this facility. We've talked about motocross, both the kind that have motors on them, and the kinds that these people pedal power to be able to do jumps and run their little courses inside. That's where we're going to drive ticket sales with all the, all of these other activities, that's going to generate the sales tax to help pay all, all of this back, because essentially for shows, we're not going to get a huge crowd, mostly, mostly exhibitors are going to be in attendance, watching the shows and go back and forth, so I, there are a lot of items in discussion.
Sure.
What caused the scope of the project to, to grow, was there a certain area that you added, or?
I think there were a lot of pieces and parts that hadn't been addressed previously that needed to be addressed to really make the equestrian center function correctly, so that's, that's part of the growth, and then whenever, whenever you.
That's what that means.
You set up and do focus group interviews, and you bring thirty or forty people in, and you start gathering information on what, what's on their wish list, you, you always get a lot of, a lot of items that no man, no one had thought about before.
So you added different areas based on that, or you expanded and made areas bigger, or?
That's part of it, it just, we, we need to do this in this space so that dictated extra square footage, or it just wasn't, I don't think a real programming phase was done initially, so that's why we started.
Size of arena changed?
Size of arena is up to three-hundred by a hundred-and-fifty, it was, I think, one-twenty-five by two-fifty before, and.
Seats increased.
And the seats went from like fifteen-hundred or sixteen-hundred to three-thousand.
Yeah, that's kind of, that's the information thing.
And, and the three-thousand seats are a function of all these other events that we want to draw, if we don't have three, we're probably not going to be successful getting them there.
Well, and that's something I think that I've appreciated, and people who know a lot more about these kind of events than I do, that have been out in Rapid City, and been in Reno, and been in Sparks and Lincoln, and say, well, this is what they have there, and this is a shortcoming, and this is the reason that those events aren't always full, or, or why we're, you know, hearing that there would be this need, you know, being booked up even a year, a year and a half in advance, as far as potential interest, so.
Right, and, and we're in a great location with I-29 and 20 to, to draw a crowd.
What's the cost of the project, though?
It's, I, programming phase, we were just a little north of twenty million, we've taken a little over a million-five out of that so far, with the goal of taking some more out of it before we hit the street to bid.
Now that's just for the equestrian center. The twenty.
Right. Well, and, and the parking, the site development, and everything that goes with it.
Where, where's the access now with the new design of the earth?
The, the access point would be where Tool Depot is, off of DACE.
Is it, is the state funding Marty Friday, do you find out Friday of, or when is that?
There's a state meeting on Friday, we have been working towards giving them an update on this and asking for approval, but I'm not sure we're going to make that at this point, not because of this work, this has gone very well, as you know, there's about, there's a lot of moving parts to this project, and we're working with a couple of hotels, second hotel project, and we need to get some information that as of today, we don't have yet, relating to the market studies and things that we need, so we're kind, it's kind of a day-by-day thing right now, but we're getting very close to the point of asking for final approval, we really received approval last February, as long as we comply with all of the things that they require, so that's complicated, because there are three separate projects here, and actually four or five elements to those projects, so, but we're getting very close, they've done a great job, these guys, I mean, you've got a committee working on, as far as the Ag Center on the design, and Dale's been going through here, there's also a separate group, or overlapping group anyway, working on the fundraising part of it, so, and that's gone very well, and they're very active, they, in fact, they meet, they're meeting again, I think, on Thursday.
Yes.
So, made a lot of progress, and Joe Kelly, the guy that's been brought in as the interim director, has been an enormous help to kind of, he's got a lot of great experience with this exact type of facility, has been, I think, very helpful in, in making a lot of the, or helping to make a lot of those decisions that you're, that Dale's wrestling with as to, you know, what you really need, and what you maybe don't need, or could, or add later or something, so I, I think it's going really well, but our, there is no hard and fast deadline on the state, we wanted to try to get everything done by the end of the year, and we're pretty close, but I'm not sure we're going to get there by Friday, to be honest with you.
Okay, I, I thought.
But there, there is a, they meet every month, and if we don't have everything ready, we'll just, we'll just go to the next one, but as of standing here today, I, I think that's where we're headed, but it could change tomorrow, so, anyway, it's very actively worked on by a lot of people, so.
And some of this is probably under non-disclosure, but that second hotel is critical to this entire thing, because it's the generation of hotel motel sales tax.
All of the pieces have to fit together, right, in other words, we have sort of the authority to collect all that revenue, but we need to generate it, and that, that's coming from different pieces of the, of the parts of the, in the twenty-five acre district.
And without saying more than you ought to, do you feel like that's, there are favorable prospects of a?
Absolutely, I think, like, I wish I could reveal all that now, but, you know, it's just, we're still getting all the pieces in place, but I, I hate to sound evasive like that, I really do, I'm not trying to be, it's just there's a lot of different.
I understand.
And, and they're all positive, because again, you're, you basically have a sales tax TIF, for lack of a better, I hate to use that phrase, Larry, but, but, you know, we're talking about TIF for all these years, this is, this is a capturing, you know, sales tax and hotel tax for twenty years, so, so, up, up to twenty, hopefully it won't take that long, you'll hit, we'll hit our goal long before twenty years, that will, it just depends on how fast it's generated, so that, I think Jeremy's been, been on top of this from day one here, but he's been, you've been involved in a lot of these meetings, and so, important thing is that we're able to generate it to meet the financing needs, so I don't want to get into the weeds too much here, but I think the design has evolved very well, from where we were a year ago till today, it's, it's really, a lot of work's gone into this, and makes, a lot of these decisions make a lot of sense, I would probably cut a little more here and there, but that's just me, I'm kind of conservative, but it's a, it's a great design.
I appreciate.
Go ahead.
I appreciate seeing the design as well, I, I think it maximizes exposure along the interstate, and, which is important for a lot of reasons, go ahead.
One of the real assets that Joe Kelly's been to the group, because I haven't personally been to a horse show and have all these vendors show up to sell stuff to all of the folks that are exhibiting and watching those horse shows, or an egg show, or whatever the case may be, so we, this last couple, we actually, probably the last seven days, we focused on tweaking the plan and the site plan a little bit to really facilitate and encourage more of how those folks are going to get on the site, how they're going to set up, where they're going to set up, and make it easy access for everyone to get to them, so they sell a lot of stuff and get sales tax return.
Sales, any sales onsite, of course, is part of the package too, the corporate sales tax.
So, bigger the show, the more of those vendors show up, and, you know, some of them will work out of the back of their car, some are out of the back of their van, some will be pulling trailers with stuff that they, you walk through their trailer, some of them will be just unloaded, and it's a, it's a little bit of.
And they're targeted at the owners and trainers?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Not, not the public?
No, not necessarily, it's, yeah, but there will be, obviously, I'm sure you can buy cowboy hats and boots and.
Looking forward to it.
All of that stuff, too.
You might have a, say, a farm show there or something, that, that's non-equestrian, and you, and you might have a lot of sales that take place there, that would also be subject to the sales tax too, so it could be sort of public in a way, I mean, you know, it could be from a specific event, or it could be more of a, an open event, like, like a three-day farm show or something like that.
Private fundraising to this point, just for the good of the public, as they look at this from an aerial overview, they see the seventy to seventy-two million dollar reinvestment district, all that's going on with it, we've got this particular portion, where are we at as far as private contributions roughly? Want to put you on the spot, but.
Yeah. The goal, the goal is five million, I think they're in the four million dollar range, there's a lot of asks out there, there's a committee working on, and, and I should, you probably should be here maybe, but if you were going to get into that, but Joe Kelly is, of course, organizing from this point forward, you know, it's been all volunteer-driven to this point, now you have a professional, you know, person hired to, to complete that, which I think makes a lot of sense, and I think he's getting organized and doing very well, and he's going to have an assistant here in a couple days, right?
But that's good to know, I think the public, I think the public needs to know that, because if they heard, well, you're at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand out of a five million dollar potential, and you have four out of that five million dollars with a lot of asks, and sponsorships and suites and other things, I think that's important for the public to know in this public-private partnership.
And he has worked on this too, because we're, we're, we're requiring that, we're, the state's requiring that these be signed pledges, so we're keeping track of, probably have dual systems keeping track of that, but he's going to add an administrative person that's going to help as far as from this point forward too, so we want to have good records.
Someone to make calls, set up appointments.
Other questions, discussion?
More challenge to soup ball?
There you go.
Well, I'm very appreciative.
We don't back down from that.
I'm very appreciative of you being here, I, I think back to the Art Center, the Tyson Events Center, the Sioux City Museum, the Children's Museum, the Orpheum, and all of these were, were done part and parcel with state programs, Vision Iowa grants, and there were nice fares early on, but I think especially when you look at the fact that the state is allowing us to keep tax dollars in order to help generate this, it's not something from the state or federal government as far as a cash allocation, I think it's a great program, and so appreciate your work on it, and look forward to the partnership.
Thank you all for your support, too.
Thanks for asking.
Thank you.
I'm glad it was two weeks, not two weeks ago, because you had to see and hear more today than you would have.
Okay, great, always a moving target, thank you very much. All right, well, we will go back to item number thirteen, which was next on the agenda, and that was Chairman's Report, final department head meeting of two thousand and sixteen was held, and had lunch, John Malloy, you have the agenda in front of you, talked a little bit about wheeling and the cybersecurity vigilance that we need to continue on with, updated the intentions for January third as far as the schedule and budget, and also had a good discussion on purchasing, and were able to meet Rebecca in emergency management, so that, well, upcoming events, December twentieth, the Christmas and holiday celebration luncheon that the, the sport approved, from eleven to one, and so everyone is welcome to, to come, partake and/or serve as you feel so led, I understand Mr. Clausen has an event later that day.
Yes, sir.
And then on December twenty-seventh, there will be no board meeting, and we will simply take a week off of paying the claims, is my understanding, and then reconvene January third, my intention is to do so at three o'clock for the first organizational meeting, followed by budget whenever that finishes, so any questions on anything in there? Item C, Lawton Town Hall meeting, thought it was a good discussion, had a couple of citizens there and, and their counsel, and a good learning about how they're, they really want to seek opportunities for growth, and have had several inquiries on residential development and so on, but they're, they're landlocked, they have, tho, those who are holding land are holding land, and not willing to necessarily, necessarily sell from Century Farms and otherwise, so talked about some of the different challenges they're facing, what they're prideful about in their community, and thought it was a good give and take between some of our department heads and the board as well. And then we come to item fourteen, reports on committee meetings.
Grows Sioux Land, met last week, CF is down, didn't get a number, but it sounded like one to two-hundred, they are basically processing the whole plant, they have made urea, and they have granulated the urea, so the plant is workable, and the fire stack is being used, and it's a pretty small flame at this point, but if you're driving down the interstate, you can certainly see it, they will eventually reach that two-hundred-foot mark above the three-hundred-foot stack, so that's, they're coordinating all that with emergency management and airport. AGP is on track, their soy oil project should be done in February, and the biodiesel in July. The interchange at Salix opened. So that's a big deal, I don't know, that's about it, they're trying to decide whether to continue meeting monthly, bimonthly, quarterly.
And thank you for that segue and the word interchange, and as you know, Thursday at five o'clock, something that I forgot, the interchange justification report meeting at Sergeant Bluff, this will be open to the public, there will be those individuals from DOT, McClure Engineering, HDR, and, and so on, to be able to, to present, it won't be a formal presentation, but more, Mark Narro will make some introductory remarks, and we will hear positive comments, hopefully, on what is happening, so, just a reminder that that will take place on Thursday, five to seven. Any other committee meetings? I have one thing that I want to keep everyone apprised of, say, try to do, if you look at juvenile detention center numbers, you're going to see something that's a recurring problem, and it's this, we are currently detaining one juvenile from the BIA. We are currently detaining one juvenile from the BIA, we're currently detaining one juvenile, we budgeted over two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars on taking in individuals through the Bureau of Indian Affairs, and we are, are not receiving those individuals, because they're instead being transferred to the S Center in the Cherokee and to other places, because the per day cost in Woodbury County is a hundred-and-fifty dollars, and they're at a hundred dollars. Mark Olson, Dennis Butler, and I met with Joel, Kada Zini, and Jeremiah Lone Wolf, special agents, and this will be an issue that'll come before this board again, but the bottom line is this, they are being constrained, because within their budget, they're being looked at and saying, being told, you are to utilize the most effective and efficient cost per day, and it's not here, it's, it's there, and so because of that, our numbers are way down, and so I'm not putting forward any sort of recommendation at this point, we've got a couple of questions for the county attorney's office and otherwise, but I. But I think these gentlemen came and they would rather utilize Woodbury County, but they're also constrained from a budgetary perspective. So, I just wanted to apprise everyone of that, that Woodbury County may need to look at a lesser rate than is currently there. But that'll be a, a future decision. But that is one of the repercussions of what we're seeing right now, so.
That's too bad, 'cause I remember when that discussion came up to increase that, that contract and, you know, that was kind of a controversy at that point in time, that we weren't charging enough. And, and that was a hard decision to, to do that. And it wasn't necessarily, you know, maybe a good decision hindsight, you know, it's always twenty-twenty.
Well, and I think in one sense, you look at that and it made sense. But on the other sense, zero, zero percent of zero, you know, if you don't have those individual, it's just kind of an economics.
Kind of outsmarted ourselves on that, right?
Something to potentially revisit in the future, so. Any other committee reports? Item fifteen relates to citizen concerns. Any concerned citizens? Item sixteen, board concerns and comments? Well, with under one hour in time, Mr. Clausen, add it to your tally.
I can't get that song.
Singing on in the car all the way.